Good evening, welcome back to the City Council, May 28, 2011. This evening, City Council has had three committee meetings planned, Planning and Development, Financial Personnel, and Transportation, and then at 7:30, we will be going into a special session of City Council. So, Planning and Development, let's start with that. Committee Chair, Chris Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to introduce what will be introduced as an ordinance later this evening to allow a minor lot split on a piece of property that's up in the Strouds Run watershed area. This is a piece of property off Hashman Road, and it's to allow for a minor lot split to split off 49 acres and then 8.3 acres. And one thing that is a little different than just a run-of-the-mill minor lot split is that we would like to add a variance to allow for the larger piece of property to not have an ingress and egress.
Frontage.
Frontage, thank you. And the reason for this is because the larger piece of property is intended to be bought by Athens Conservancy, and so this would be for conservation purposes, and they don't really need a road frontage, and it would be impermanent easement, my understanding. We have the property owner and a person from the Athens Conservancy here to answer any questions the council may have on this. This has been in front of the planning, the county commissioners, and they have approved that. Marilai?
This also came in front of the Planning Commission. Again, it's for a conservation easement, so the ingress and egress will be an easement to the property from the road. The way it's worked out is between the property owner, the one who's going to acquire some of the property, and the Conservancy's going to acquire the lion's share of eight, I should say, a split of eight acres versus the other 40, 49. I believe, did we put a recommendation to you guys? I thought we did. Did you get that? Yes.
Did you get that in comment?
Okay. And again, the time is of the essence, because this is a purchase that's going down, and you guys are going to be all on next month.
Right. Do you have anything to add?
Any other questions?
Yeah, no questions. Well, I'd be interested, just if you have some comments about the general, you know, the importance of this in terms of land conservation and its general, you know, location, that would be helpful. When we have experts, we like to hear from them, then.
Okay. My name is Phil Cantino, I'm the Vice President of the Athens Conservancy. The two reasons we're really interested in this land, the primary reason is that it includes the headwaters of Tucker Run, which is one of the main tributaries of Dow Lake, and protecting that will help protect the water quality in the lake. It will, secondly, provide additional public land, it will be open to the public, although we don't really have intention of developing a trail system or anything, but it will be open for hiking and nature study and hunting, too, by my position. And that's basically it. The owner, Mimi Morrison, who is here, would like to sell it, has been heard dream that this has become a nature preserve. And the reason there's a third person involved is that this is a case where we can't use Clean Ohio money, as we have in the past, partly because of the timing and partly because the Kenan Township trustees are not very supportive of our mission, and it's in Kenan Township. But, so we have to take out a bank loan, and we cannot afford the payments of the entire property. Unfortunately, there's an adjoining property owner, Doug Mann, here, who is willing to buy eight acres of it, 8.3 acres, and put a conservation easement on that land, and also give us an ingress, egress easement. You know, it's wide enough to be a road, but we have no intention of building a road there, but the bank acquires that that be there. So, the whole, all three of us have the same goal, that this be entirely a nature preserve, but the only way this can happen is by dividing it up in this way. Yeah?
Headwaters of Tucker Run are there. Is this land adjacent to any other protected property?
Oh, Strouds Run. Yeah, I should have said that. Actually, his longest boundary is with Strouds Run. It's a triangular property, and the hypotenuse borders Strouds Run.
I might just add, again, thank you for the work on this altogether and all parties involved. The mayor and I recently had an information gathering about hydraulic fracking and the concerns regarding our water quality and safety with that. Again, this entices me, because it's an effort to, again, to preserve and protect the water quality of Dow Lake. So, again, thank you for your hard work on this, and I'm definitely supporting this particular issue.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
If there's no other questions concerning this, I will bring it up for readings tonight.
Let's move on to planning and personnel.
Can I have, Ms. Lee? Just for information purposes, the chief power was approached by the University Chief of Police, wanting to put together what he's calling a City-University Joint Police Services Advisory Council. I gave him the go-ahead on it. They're putting it together and crafting it right now. It's really going to be a communication system, so to speak, between the various entities. Part of the bylaws and charter they're putting together would include a city council member. So, I think there's no real authority for you to do anything, except put your thinking caps on and think if you want to participate in the near future. I don't know when they want to have it, before we get it by September. They want to have, you know, various city members on it, as well as university members. Would be the designation of the Service Safety Director, a member of the City Council, possibly two members of the Labor Association Executive Committee, a member of the Athens Chamber of Commerce, and a large member with an emphasis on community service. So, I guess that's somebody's senior service. Victims advocacy. The university side, they're going to have somebody from each of the senates, classified faculty, ASME, Student Senate, and Division of Student Affairs. And again, this is just in his formation point, but, well, they'd be asking one of you to serve on it if you were so desired. And it's really, Paul's not really in the planning development, but he's part of the, almost a community service one, but, just so you know. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous?
Moving on to finance and personnel.
We're going to have, we do have a staffing ordinance on the agenda that we'll be asking for suspension on. It turns out that in the Water Department, our labor supervisor is off for an indefinite time due to an injury, and the city engineer has asked that we increase the FTE for labor supervisor to two persons through December 2011, to allow assurance that we have a supervisory person in this area. At this moment, we're not sure whether this injury is going to be a short term or a long term, but again, since we're going to be gone in August, we're taking prepared for motion. Mayor, you have something to add?
As a result, what you're seeing is the Sewer Department labor supervisor, Scott Lambert, has been doubling up, and as a result, that's taxing our system a little bit. The labor supervisor for the water treatment plant has had an injury of some sort. I think it was off the job site, but I can't, off work, I mean, but I don't know, telling the truth. I know, as it stands now, he's going through the doctor, he's going through physical therapy, and he doesn't know how long it'll take. That's the way I'm told. Other than that, usually, you know, they tell me I'm getting in the weeds when I start getting to the personnel level, but the fact is, where it's an unknown how long this person will be out. And we're just accumulating a lot of, you know, this is the season we do a lot of our work, so, just to make it grow. We may not need it, but we want to be in position just in case.
Yeah, I'm sorry, could, maybe I just need a little clarification. We're...
We're adding a staffing level to the labor supervisor.
Okay.
If you look on the end of your...
The last page of your agenda.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Interim, temporary?
Yes.
Okay. Through December 2011? Okay. Thank you.
And you're not increasing the FTE in the city, you're just putting a person that's already on staff?
I'm sorry.
And we will not be hiring anybody to replace the one who's doubled.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I don't think it would work, trying to break me with somebody.
You never know.
Okay. Also, we have a discussion of state collection of municipal income tax, which, I talked to the auditor earlier today. She talked to council at our last meeting and indicated her concerns about the possibility of this occurring. At this moment, we really don't know whether this is something that's going to come down the road or not, so the auditor has had an interview with the newspaper, and we probably all read that. She, again, expressed her concerns, but at the moment, she's not asking for us to take any action on a resolution or anything else until we're more sure of what might be called for. So, early September, we might be taking some action with regards to this proposal at the state level, but right now, there's nothing for us to do. So, that's that. However, she did point out that we just recently asked authority to borrow $500,000 for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, and we will be seeing, when we come back, an ordinance from our bond counsel, Mr. Schfali, authorizing the borrowing of this $500,000 and the bond to cover it. And so, the auditor may well be asking us to suspend on that bond ordinance, so that we can get that money appropriated and at work. So, that's just a heads-up for early September. So, that's really all we have on our agenda right now.
Any questions for the chair or comments from the mayor?
Just since you brought up bonds, I'm wondering where we are with the latter trucked borrowing? Has that just moved at all yet?
Well, we haven't borrowed it, because we don't want to pay the interest until we have to use the money.
I'm just, I guess I'm wondering the timeline, if it's changed at all.
It's still available, still have our interest rate, so when we're ready to pay for it, then we'll borrow. I guess the other thing is, council and the administration haven't decided how much of the money we have set aside in our capital fund to put towards it, so we don't want to borrow any more than we need to. So, when it, I assume that when it gets close to time, you will all make that decision, and then we will only borrow what we need. As with these, this other $500,000 and the $850,000, which will also probably be coming up in September, I have authority to borrow up to that amount, so we just don't, we don't want to borrow any more than we have to, so, as far as I know, when the time gets closer and we need the money, then that decision will be made. Because we already have all the ordinances in place, you know, it won't take long to get that money from the bank. It's a local bank, very quick turnaround.
You heard your hand up earlier?
Oh, I was just going to ask if anybody had any questions.
Just one additional question about the truck. The fire truck is on order.
Yes.
Correct. And we're still anticipating a delivery by the end of the year.
November, December, somewhere in that range.
Which is a little earlier than we hadn't originally anticipated. Which is good, that's good news.
And realize, by that time, we'll have a better fix on how much cash flow we do need and how much to borrow towards the end of the year.
Finance and personnel, that's it.
Move on to Transportation Committee. Committee Chair, Chris Smolik.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We have four agenda items tonight, and the first that's on our agenda that's listed is the new bus shelter, and I might put, that those are new bus shelters, possibly. Earlier this year, the Ohio Department of Transportation received some stimulus money, and that money has been available to municipalities for grants, and for specifically, I believe, designated for bus shelters, and we can apply for up to $50,000 for up to six bus shelters. So, at this point, we're in the process of identifying where we will need some new ones. We know that we need the one replaced at the community center, and we're thinking of one on Richland Avenue, also Richland at Andover Court. So, there will quite possibly be some other locations that we'll be identifying over the next few months, and that legislation will come up then in September. The grant funds would pay for 90% of the cost of the shelter, and then we would have a 10% local match. Marilai?
And I would mention, we don't have to accept all, all the full six. This is actually grants that was applied for by ODOT to the feds. They've got the grant, they're just saying, okay, now, you know, we had you in mind, this is where, you know, we have, you know, we know you have a need for shelters. It's kind of like a capital improvement portion of the bus system that is operating. It's a standalone from our bus system, but it's related to our Athens Transit. So, you know, I know we need, the one is looking kind of ragged at the community center. I know we got a new one here for that bus system just last year, you know, normal funding. We took that one, of course, and put it Hope Drive. But I do notice there are times when I see people standing out, waiting for the bus, particularly in Richland by Station Two, I observed. I suspect there's also ones on the, on the end periphery of each of our bus systems, whether it's out, all the way out to Beaumont Green or the Plains. So, the intention is to actually make it a little bit amenable for somebody who's waiting for the bus to come. And I will mention, well, that's about it right there. And again, 10% match, we don't have to go for the whole enchilada, if that's the term, but at the same time, they will give us some better shelter.
Thank you. Member?
We'll have to front the money?
Probably.
And how much will it be?
What was it, 50?
Up to $50,000 total.
Total, okay.
And we get, we put 10% in.
Okay. Second agenda item is called Moving Planet Day, and the city was contacted at the end of June about an event that group is wanting to schedule, and they are requesting a street closing on September 24th. We're in discussion with that group that's organizing it. The focus of this event is to support moving away from fossil fuel and creating a more sustainable planet by gathering together and showing collective support for this. The plan site at this point is on, directly in front of the New Baker Center?
The Old Baker Center.
Oh, the old? It is Old Baker.
East Union, between College and Court. Then we have usually Earth Bay. Originally, they approached us about trying to be in front of New Baker.
New Baker, but you would prefer the Old Baker.
They were talking about trying to do New Baker all the way up to Union Street, which is a no-go for us.
Right. So, the discussions have taken place with Service Safety Director, the police, and the fire, and it's a matter of talking with that group again to see if we can get things organized. And if that is the case, and it looks like it can happen, and they can pay for the fees that it will cost to close the street, then it will be an ordinance in early September, probably needing to suspend that to get it passed on time.
And probably an emergency clause. If you want to know more about it, I think their website is 350.org, which is basically the part 2 million of carbon they want to put us through.
Two other small, not small agenda items, but other agenda items. Two of them concern our Athens transit system, and this fall, we will be publishing a request for proposals for the renewal of that transit system, and then also a request for an administrator for the, for the system, and an organization would help us administer that.
Let me add a few things on that. We are, we're working with ODOT, they basically have a consultant, have some money for a consultant. Earlier, about two months ago, three months ago, I guess, closer to three, we requested some technical assistance, and this is free technical assistance coming from ODOT, to analyze our bus system. The questions I was asking, of course, was, can we make our bus system more efficient, you know, get better service with the same amount of money? The other thing, of course, was the RFP. If you look at the 2007 ordinance that we entered into contract with McDonald for the use of our Athens Transit, we had a one-year lease with a four-year rollover, which means we're at the end of that cycle. The intention is to put an RFP out there, and we are asking for this technical system how to craft a better one. One of the conversations that came across in the dialogue with the consultant, she said, really, we should have somebody more on top of the performance of this, and the recommendation is, just like we jobbed out the Go Bus system, have somebody on top of it, is put a request for proposals for somebody to administer our grant, so the money would be passed through to the administration. The intent there is that, as a mayor, as an executive assistant in my office, we do not always have time to make sure we're getting the best service at any given time. And so, the question got to be, should we, should we put out a quest for qualifications, an RFQ, to use the acronym, and see if there's some organization out there that may be able to do a better job? There's no, there's no necessity to take it on, but I think if the consultant says you might be able to do better, we should explore it, from my point of view. Again, the RFP for the contract should go out, but also an RFQ for the administration. So, those are two things that are working in tandem. Any questions on that?
Yeah. At one point, not too long ago, the city ran the bus system itself. I'm wondering if the cost analysis has been done in the past couple of years to see if, to see how that compared to what we're getting now?
No, it hasn't, and that was one of the questions I originally did ask. I think we got sidetracked with the RFQ, the RFP at this point. Really what you'd be talking about is taking on a larger staff. It could probably be done, because you'd be taking out the component of the profit side of it. But we really didn't go explore it too much. I don't know if we had time to do that at this point. We could. I've asked that question again, but again, we're focusing on the administration. One of the things, of course, in our contract is really, we get charged by the operating hour. There's actually no, there's almost no way to put in how we have it structured right now financially, to say, okay, we want to increase ridership. How do we incent, what's the term, incentivize, which is not really a word, but how do we, how do we make, get a bus system that says, we want more rides all the time, you know, rather than just an operator that says, okay, four hours, five hours. So, that's why the discussions that has evolved, and this is, okay, so, how do we make a better system, period?
And so, as, right, as I understand it, too, the conversations have been, we need to make sure that we respond in time to submit our request for proposals to the state, so that our system is in good operating order. But I've been impressed with the person that's been providing some technical assistance, and her looking at the route and just saying, you know, we're going to have a fixed route or a demand stop, and hopefully with the goal of increased ridership and more efficiency for the system.
In fact, that's one of the questions, too, do we continue running a fixed route system or an on-demand system? And this is probably far-fetched from what you want to know about, but with the amount of ridership we get, most cities and organizations run with an on-demand system when we have this many riders. You know, part of her study, the consultants, is actually going to have somebody riding the buses and see what kind of numbers we have. We do have numbers generated by the bus, by McDonald's, we have ridership in terms of the fare box, but the amount is, you know, would it be better just going to a on-demand, where we just make the route as it goes, and, you know, somebody calls in and says, we wanted our curb-curb service on demand? That's what a lot of other places do for this type of ridership, the numbers. So, that's one of the analysis, et cetera, that's occurring.
Okay. I'm working through the agenda, so we can be finished by 7:30.
Okay.
The next is that we know that we will need to be rebidding on the Carriage Hill Bridge Project, which was something that we had hoped would be, the bridge would be replaced by the end of August, but the one bid that did come in, came in over the price, and so we're going to need to rebid, and I believe you have some additional...
I think we put the bid out, I think the estimate, excluding some of the materials, because we're buying some of the pre-stressed concrete spans, was somewhere in the neighborhood, about 160, 170. This came in about 190 and change, quite high, more than the 10% range. I guess we're, we only had one bid, too. I think the interpretation of this is that the time constraints, when they led the bid, the first, the first round of bids, of course, were trying to do it overnight, you know, like that. I think that got a lot of them a little bit leery of the whole process. We want to open it up. This will mean, of course, that everything drops back till probably when school starts. Again, this is going to be, one lane's going to be open all the time anyway. I'll try scheduling it after move-in, but it depends on the bid process and the opening of it, because we will not satisfy the numbers.
Last item...
Is the condition such that you couldn't let it go till...
November.
So, next year?
Next year or spring?
Well, if you remember, we're trying to take this money and roll it into our local match for the asphalt bridge.
It needs to be expanded.
Yeah. And that would mean trying to do two bridges on Richland in one year, which may be difficult.
And as I remember from the street tour, that this was one of the bridges that Director Stone had said is really in need of nothing replaced now, so...
Yes.
He had identified it earlier this year.
The idea is, we want to get it done, we want to try doing it in August, but as I say, it went overpriced, and we're going to cast it out there and see what else comes in. The idea is to get it done after move-in, but before the asphalt plants close down, which will be in November, so we've got a good window there. The question is, of course, it's not going to be as free and easy as doing it in August.
Last item, then, is some additional information that I'd like to provide about the summer paving program. And you might remember that earlier in the month, on July 18th, the city, the Athens Messenger, produced the city repaving schedule, but there have been some questions about it, and I thought I would just provide a little bit more information that might clarify it. One of the items that people might have seen, if you've gone over the community center later, lately, is that the parking lot has been repaved there. And I did want to let you know that that was at the top of the annual paving list at the request of the contractor, and that the paving for that has also been paid for out of the community center fund, and that's a proprietary money fund, and so it can only, that money that's raised at the community center can only be spent at the community center, so it's restricted for those purposes. Our larger annual paving project budget is about $250,000 a year, and so the streets that will be repaved this summer, and I know there have been some questions, so I'll just run through the list very briefly, Home Street, Briarwood, Maplewood, Verona, West Washington, West Union, and several locations on West Union, Coss Street, and then East Union Street from Stewart to the end of the road. So, the other items that have come up, as I've talked with different people, has also been, well, what about the condition of Richland Avenue? Because it does get a lot of tear, wear and tear, it does have a lot of traffic, a lot of businesses on it. We did apply for the Small Cities Grant Program earlier this year, that was not approved, and the Public Works Director is seeking other sources of funding for that. But it's not just that it's an issue of just repaving it. The grading, the crown in the center of the road's very important for how the water drains off, so that need, work needs to be done. Another thing that needs to be looked at are the number of businesses that enter and exit, have entrances and exits, it's called access management, we need to be looking at that. We also need to be looking at utilities upgrades on that street. So, it's a very large project, and we are looking for monies to do that, so it's not that we can take, you know, a small portion of the annual city... So, it's not that we can take, you know, a small portion of the, the annual city repaving budget and just take care of it and address it. I think that would be a little bit short-sighted. So, we appreciate everybody's patience with the, the repaving this summer, and appreciate the comments, too, that we've had from different members of the public, because it's helped us answer some questions, I hope. Yes.
Thank you. If I recall correctly, I believe that Public Works Director Stone had mentioned that one option for Richland Avenue would be to put a thin layer or a temporary layer of asphalt down to suffice for a year or two until we could tackle the full project. Is that correct? Was that something that was discussed as one option?
The last that I heard was that the most difficult problems on Richland, the most serious holes or gaffs, or I'm not sure what they'd be called, but it's a variety of situations or conditions there, that, that the street department would address the most serious ones. But I don't know that there's going to be an actual thin layer going over. His concern was, is if you put another layer of asphalt down, you know, do you want to be tearing it up if we're fortunate enough to receive grant funds?
Right.
Okay. That is all the, those are all the agenda items that I have to cover on transportation tonight.
And it's on our about 7:30, so let's move into a special session of city council. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. Ordinances for second reading. O-8211 is an ordinance to extend the current contract authorized by ordinance O-10186, granting a franchise to Columbus Southern Power Company for use of the city right-of-way and declaring an emergency. Member Gosny.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to consider ordinance 8211 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is this existing contract, which has been in place for around, about 25 years, is coming to expire on August 1st, and so, we're, we're seeking an extension of that contract.
Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
Opposed? The rule's been suspended. Move adoption?
I would like to move adoption of ordinance 8211.
Second.
This ordinance is extending our current contract for three months while we, the city works with Columbus Southern Power on a new contract, which we have, we do have a draft of that will be circulated shortly, I believe, a working draft at least. And the main thing that is in the draft now that wasn't in the earlier contract is a section on tree maintenance and sort of an arrangement between the utility company and the city on setting some guidelines in terms of how the interaction will go between the city and the utility company on the, the tree trimming practices.
Member... Say his name, is it? And isn't the timeframe quite a bit different also?
Uh, yes. The, and again, what we're voting on tonight is simply a three-month extension of our, our existing contract, but in the draft, instead of a 25-year contract, we're suggesting a five-year agreement so that we can revisit it more often if necessary. I'm also looking at, I've, I've got a list of other franchise agreements from around our EPA district for several states, and there are a couple other things in there that I'm looking at. Ann Arbor has a franchise fee that they use to fund a alternative energy program in their city. And so, that's something that I'm looking into and trying to seek some advice from a, from EPA, who has, has looked at this in our EPA district.
Other comments? Member Bain.
We added ANSI standards, which was, which seemed to be needed after the great chainsaw massacre a few years ago. And I'd also like to declare that I have a conflict and cannot vote on the actual ordinance.
I'll take it. Other comments? Yes.
Just to let you know that I also have a conflict and won't be able to vote.
Well, do we have a problem left now?
Fine, you've got no problem. You have no problem with this?
If you have the emergency call, then, okay. Okay. Further comments? All those in favor of ordinance 8211?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 8311 is an ordinance granting a variance from the Athens City Subdivision Regulations to Marie Morrison for property located on Hashman Road outside the corporate limits, but within the three-mile jurisdiction to allow a minor lot split and declaring an emergency. Member Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that we consider 8311 under suspension.
Second.
The reason for suspension is that this project needs to go forward with the various property owners, and if we wait until after August, it would be undue burden on them.
Other comments on suspension? All those in favor of suspension of the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
I ask that we adopt ordinance 8311.
Second.
This is to grant a variance. The variance would be, instead of having the two lots when we split, one of the lots would not have the normal road frontage, but it would have an egress, ingress through the second lot that is developed from this lot split.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. On the ordinance 8411, it's an ordinance amended ordinance 121 form, authorized staffing levels except that A and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we consider ordinance 8411 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
As the mayor indicated, at the moment, our labor supervisor in the Water Department is, is off with an injury, and we're doubling up with the wastewater supervisor, and it's getting to be, it's getting to be an untenable position. So, we would like to make this change in the staffing as soon as possible.
Other comments? All those in favor of suspension of the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 8411.
Second.
Again, this ordinance authorizes an interim temporary labor supervisor through December 2011 for the Water Maintenance Department. This is due to an injury, and we don't know whether this would be a long-term problem or not, but we're, we're addressing it at this point. That's where we are.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 8411 has been adopted. The next item on our agenda is an executive session for city council to discuss with its law director pending and threatened litigation that's before the city. To go into executive session, it does take a motion, a second, and a roll call vote. After the executive session, the only other item on our agenda is an adjournment. To give people a little bit of time, let's say till 7:45, if there's anyone that wishes to speak to a council member, that would be fine. But do I have a motion for executive session?
A motion that we move into executive session and include the law director, the mayor, and the auditor?
Second.
Motion and a second. Let's start at this end.
Aye.
Shut it up.
Aye.
You guys are ahead of me.
I am.
Aye.
All of you said aye. Okay. 7:45, we will go into executive session.
I picked up one minute.